I think the only person who might choke could be Jean Marie, but they did say we're gonna start Ed Sitz. Karen's got her budget presentation to get to in about a half hour. So we're gonna... I'll move approval at the minutes.
It is, isn't it?
On paper. Yeah, all right. Karen, I think you have the floor.
Thank you. Okay, so you got a copy of the draft community profile?
Boring.
I know. There's a lot of stuff.
Why did you say we're reading this first? This was not boring.
Yes, there's a lot of stuff. There's a lot of data in it. And it's partly, we're fulfilling the state requirements to do all of this. So because I knew that it could not be everybody's most exciting thing to read, I thought we could go through and let me highlight a couple of things, just stats. And the reason I want to do that is for a couple of reasons. One, just to make sure that it makes sense to people what we're talking about. But also, just because something gets pulled out of the American Community Survey doesn't always mean it's perfect data. So if somebody really feels like that's not representing what's going on, we want to know that. And I think it's fair to, you know, you should always question information. Most of the data that we're gonna talk about today has come from what's called the American Community Survey. American Community Survey is a tool of the Census Bureau. It is their intersensical, intersenses way of monitoring demographic data. And they put out an incredible amount of information based on household surveys. And that's really what we're gonna go through today. And again, there tends to be a lot of variation in the intersensual year. So you can look at the ACS data and you can see it, like it flip-flops a little from year to year. Part of that that's going on is there, the ACS is actually a five-year running average. So I may say something is 2016 data, but it's really a running average of 2012 to 2016. Again, more information than you probably want, but just, you know, so you know that's what's going on here. And that's why sometimes you see a little bit of variation because it's smoothing out some of the curves.
How is it viewed by the state, the data?
It's universally the best, the most comprehensive tool that's out there, you know, across the country. Again, just because it's the best doesn't mean it's always right. I think it's pretty good. But that's why you guys who probably are, you know, know information, have a sense of what is happening in your community. So it's good to question things and it's good for us to have to look and make sure, does this make sense? So with that, let's just really start something that everybody really knows. We've grown a lot. We're at 20,000, 23 right now. You can see there are decades where we practically doubled population. And, you know, it's just run a fairly interesting trajectory with population growth. We have added more people in, I think we've said this a couple of times, between 2010 and 2016, more people than any other community in the state. And I think I just wanted to say, we're not the only fast-growing town. So Gorm and Wyndham are right there with us. We just edged them out by a couple of people.
So their rate, I think sort of what you'll hear sometimes in the news is Gorm and Wyndham are the fastest-growing communities by rating on their end.
But I just want to make sure that when we talk about the others, is it a percentage? The growth is a percentage of where they started? They increase by X percent as opposed to high numbers?
So that's...
Well, for Gorm and Wyndham, it's really both. So Gorm and Wyndham edge us out just a tiny bit with percentage increase, but they're just a little bit below where we are in terms of total numbers. So these, you know, those three communities are really neck and neck, as well as Falmouth. Falmouth is another rapidly growing community.
That's what I'm asking, because Falmouth always looked as if it was a percentage increase because the actual numbers are pretty small, not small, but...
They're probably...
It's around 900 now, I think. I think, but don't quote me. I should never, I should never say things from memory. But just, just want to put everything in perspective. We may be adding a lot of people compared to other communities, but Scarborough's only 2% of the state. So just want us to shrink us back down in terms of perspective. So Cumberland County is about 22%, and what you see is the balance of Cumberland County plus Scarborough. So again, just looking at percent, make sure we don't get too big of a head. So this is just trying to show you that the rates can be very volatile from decade to decade. And this is just another way of looking at it. And I wanted to do, actually, I think you can see, I'm afraid the machine is enlarging a little past where the screen is. But down below are the percentage rates. But these are the actual numbers for the town of Scarborough, population increases by decade. So you can see, like, 1990 to 2000, that was a really big increase. And I know that you guys around the table probably feel it in terms of the amount of growth that was there.
The number of hours we spent in planning.
Sure, sure. Absolutely. And so 2010 moderated a little bit in terms of the actual numbers. In 2016, you know, we're again, less than what we've done in other decades, but still pretty good for a main town and pretty good for having come through a recession, if you will. And so the reason I have this chart I drew is this is representing the actual increases, growth, in the state of Maine. So the data that you were looking at just before this was 2016. Only the state of Maine's data is out for 2017. And I want you to look in 2017, the growth from 2016 to 2017 in terms of population growth is like double. It's a huge increase. And you have to anticipate, when we get our 2017 numbers, there's nothing that tells me that we wouldn't be seeing a fairly substantial increase from 2016 to 2017. Just give you some demographics in terms of characteristics. I like this because you sort of talked about the kids and the seniors. And so here, under 18, right now, 2016, we're about 22% of the total Scarborough population. 65 and older is about 19%. Median age is 45. You can see that's a fairly significant increase in the median age for the town. I think Tom likes to say that we're the oldest community, but we're not. There's a lot of communities within Cumberland County that are struggling with this particular age group. And then just to track it, because we want to, you know, understand what's going on with the seniors. So in 2000, we were 65 and older, about 2,000, oh, sorry, about 13% of the population. 2010, only 19%. So we've added, what?
You have two 2010s up there.
Oh, darn it.
So is that 2016?
Yes, thank you very much.
So 2016, we're at 19, right?
So it's a draft. Good.
That's why you should tell it to us first.
Exactly, exactly.
Is that graph in here?
That graph is not in here. I pulled it back, I didn't see it. Yeah. I think this is what we see.
The numbers are in there, but the numbers are out.
Yeah, exactly. And then down at the bottom, you can sort of see, I wanted to look at, we used to call 85-plus the frail elderly, but I just don't think that term is appropriate anymore. I think people are healthier longer. But the percentage of population 85-plus, 1.3% in 2000, 2.5% in 2015. All right, again, I'm sorry I'm rushing, but I want you guys time to ask some questions. So one thing that I think is really important for us to understand is we're looking at the, you know, the future, is talking about, all right, well, what types of households are actually in the community? And we just equate, a household is the same thing as an occupied unit as far as the census is concerned. So that's all that's talked about. And the household refers to all the folks in that particular household. So what we have is, maybe it surprises people, 25% of our households in 2016 are one-person households.
Surprising.
Yeah. 6% are, they call them non-family households, but it's just unrelated people living in the same household. You've got essentially a third of family households with children under 18. And then the balance of the households are family households. So there are kids, and there may be kids living at home that are older than 18, or older than 17.
Have any data on whether that one-person household, 0.5%, is male or female?
We do have some of that. And I can't remember whether it's in one of the data charts, but I do know I can pull that info.
There was some info on that.
Good.
How do you handle places like Atria, like shores and the others?
It depends on what types of units there are. Atria is gonna be considered a group quarters because there, half of them at least, are not individual units. But some of them, that are the apartments, the Census Bureau would treat that as an apartment, as a rental unit. But it does depend on to the reporting person, because remember, all this is self-reported. So I think there's a little bit of blending that goes in there. But technically, if it's an independent unit with its own kitchen and a bathroom, and, you know, it should be counted as part of this. Now, income, I just wanted to show us, it's always good to understand where we stand. So you've got Cumberland County at $61,000, $62,000 for their median household income. You've got Scarborough certainly above that. We are fifth, one, two, three, four, one, two, three, yes, fifth. Had to count the little discs. We are fifth in terms of overall income within Cumberland County. So Cumberland, Cape Elizabeth, Falmouth, North Yarmouth, interesting enough, those all have higher median household incomes. Interestingly enough, when I pulled the data, I think I pulled, because sometimes there can be a difference between household income and family income and per capita income. And we ranked fifth in all of those, no matter where you went. The top communities changed a little bit, like Falmouth and Cape Elizabeth, and sometimes Yarmouth got in there. Those all, you know, changed around a little bit, but we are solid five, no matter what we do. But the one interesting thing about the income from the 2016 data is that for the first time, we really saw the household income start to rise a little bit. In the, according to the American Community Survey, if you looked from 2010 to 2016, they were up a little, down a little, up a little, up, down a little. So for 2016, it's the first time that you see, you know, at least a noticeable increase in the income. And it happened really, you know, in most of the coastal towns as well. And similarly, when I pulled wage data, for the first time, the wage data showed an uptick. So that's good. And this is because I just really wanted to use an iPhone image. I had it, I had to use it. So we're talking about mobility. And yes, the mobile iPhone has nothing to do with this data.
But it's human.
Yes, you know. So the geographic mobility, which the census is calling for length of time at your current residence. And I think for Scarborough, we have a really interesting profile. So 5%, this is 2016, 5% of our households have been in that household for a year or less. 29% have been six years or less. So 29% of households are new to 2000, from 2010.
And that's residents, not town resident, right? So if you lived in, that's...
Scarborough. Yeah.
Are you talking about how long someone's been in Scarborough or how long they've been in their house?
The only definition is in their house. So there are probably a few folks who, there's a sliver of that, that probably is people moving from home to home. All right, so 29% minus one household. There will be others.
I've seen that, yes. My neighborhood has changed and there are a lot there. They stay five, six, or seven years and then they move because it's different kind of housing, it's smaller.
Starter homes.
It's a starter home. And right now, we've got several starter homes that have either renovated or sold or are in separate, three, three on Maple Avenue or for Sunset.
There's 16% in between six and forever, so...
Right.
That's a small number, it seems to me.
The 29%?
No.
Oh, the five?
It's between six and maybe eight. So yeah, here, you're saying 57% are Maine natives.
Yes.
In the report, you talk about they were Scarborough red.
I should double-check that, because I think that's, I think that's Maine, I'm sorry, it's Maine natives living in Scarborough. So of all Scarborough residents, 50% of them are native.
To Scarborough or to Maine?
To Maine, I believe. But I should come back and check that.
They were born in Maine.
Yes. They were born in Maine. Just want to make, I know that everybody has a very strict definition.
First, breath.
Yes, born in, technically born in Maine. They didn't ask about parentage.
Well, that's okay. I just want to make sure.
Just the child itself.
It's not like any of the over six years is considered to be a Maine native.
Yeah.
So those first two and the last two are really separate?
Yes. Oh, yeah, absolutely. But, you know...
And if you go to ancestry.com, there's a lot of French Canadians that came down to Maine. Their parents brought them down, mom had her baby in Boston or Brunswick. And they were baptized and they're way back to Canada. And it is. How do you find housing?
Let's just remind ourselves, you know, we are primarily a single-family home community at this point. So 78.5% of all of our occupied units, households, are owner-occupied. 21.5% are renters. Interesting, 32% of the rented homes are single-family. And between 2010 and 2016, the percent of renters with children under 18 dropped from 32% to 21%. And see, this may be where you're seeing some of the influx of the seniors and getting counted toward the rentals. So I think that's probably what's happening.
It's gonna change that.
And 46, no, I'm surprised, 46% of the renters are single-person households. This is, I was hoping Jean Marie was gonna be here, but, you know, this was pulled from the sold housing units. So in 2017, or since 2010, the number of units sold were up 78%. And this I found really hard to believe too, that the, but the median price of the sold homes was up 80% in 17 years, which, I mean, sorry, 70%. And so this did not come from the ACS. This came from an aggregated source of local listing service info. So I think this is one of those stats that we want to really double-check. And we can look at, ACS data also does some of the median price homes. We can certainly take a look at that.
I think if you look at age, if you look at the data on age, because again, three neighbors there, there have been like eight or nine homes that have sold, that are starter homes. So it's changing that data in my view, right? Because then the numbers are gonna be... So median price of sold homes was up 80%?
Yep. And so that, I'm struggling with, so I want to double-check it with another source.
The median price sold in 2017.
I know.
Okay, yeah, it's a little confusing, but I get what you're going for.
Yeah, just, you know, this is like the gut check of what's really happening in the community. This is not the median price of all homes.
Just those sold.
It's only those that sold.
In 2017.
But if you think of some of the developments that have gone in, there's been some high-end stuff that's gone in, in that time. So that may not be that far off.
Yeah.
I don't think it is that far off. I just want to make sure that we're talking about within the year 2017. Or 2020.
Correct, correct. That was for the whole year. And I believe the first quarter, first quarter, first two months, again, going from memory, so, was a little bit more, exactly, it is. It is a little bit higher than that. I think it was like 402, something like that. So we, you know, we certainly have high-end housing.
Does this have to do with formal housing?
Yeah. It's not. Okay, so let's talk a little bit about jobs. And the first thing I want you to know is there are several different sources of job data. And they can all look very different. So I'm gonna dissect this for you. This, two stats up here, three if you consider the total. The first thing, the wage and salary jobs, that's recorded by the Department of Labor. Those jobs represent employment in companies that are covered by unemployment insurance, which means...
In Scarborough.
Yes, correct, in Scarborough. But the entire dataset, you know, for the state of Maine, it's sometimes called wage and salary, sometimes it's called covered employment. And that relates to whether or not those unemployment insurance pay. So what that means is if you're self-employed, or like a lot of the hair salons, those are like independent stations. So the hair salon, the person who rents the booth, yeah, may not be an employee of the firm, they're renting a booth. So those types of jobs are not included in wage and salary. And so we make a little bit of an estimate. So I'm gonna say the self-employed contract, that's my estimate. And I do it based on a percentage of, you know, some national data. And then I'm gonna talk a little bit about some other employment data that gives me a sense of, you know, I don't think we're too far off. And this is something that, just to give you a flavor, so in terms of the number of jobs to residents, we're almost at a one-to-one basis in terms of employees, jobs in Scarborough versus people. And then between 2010 and 2016, we've added 140 net new wage and salary establishments. And establishments just means it's a, it's a, it's located, yeah, and it's located in Scarborough. But like Hannaford is a firm that has establishments all over. So sometimes they distinguish firms and establishments. But these are unique to Scarborough, 140. Hesitate to use the word company because a company could have more than two locations, but they're physical addresses, so to speak.
Be interesting to see the ratio against people who are 16 plus or...
Sure.
More than age.
Yeah. And I'll let you know, like Portland has, being the central hub that it is, has always had more employees than people living in town. And so that presents some interesting dynamics too. But I think, you know, one of the interesting challenges as we look at the economic development pieces is trying to understand, well, how many folks are living and working in the same community? Because that's a great opportunity for folks and, you know, that's on commute. And, you know, so we do have some of that, I think is in your packet. If you could stand to read through it, you could find it. And so just want to talk about our largest employment sectors. Healthcare is growing and increasing in its numbers of employees. It's about 21% of Scarborough's total employment now. Retail is 16.5%, decreasing, whereas healthcare is increasing.
Decreasing by percentage?
By percentage.
I think the numbers were still, I remember...
They're very close, yeah.
Increasing slightly, but they're a percentage of.
Exactly. And the interesting, you know, piece for retail for us to think about too is if you compare employment to square footage of retail, you're gonna see a pretty big jump in square footage of retail, but no real increase in employment. And that's because the retail is more efficient, more, you know, fewer employees serving a larger amount of square footage, fewer employees per square feet. And the other piece to these two industries too is remember, retail, well, very wonderful jobs, they do tend to be lower paying than other sectors. Healthcare tends to be a little bit higher paying. So you do have a, you know, a reasonably chunk of the economy that is on the lower side of the wage scale.
And in terms of sort of any service industry, like restaurant or lodging, are any of those included in retail numbers?
They're, they're, they're hopefully isolated. There's a restaurant, you know, there's a separate category for those. And if you asked about restaurant and lodging, is how it's usually categorized, that's about 78% of our employment. Again, that's gonna spike during the summer. So it depends if you're looking at third-quarter numbers or if you're looking at annual, these are average annual numbers. And then I did want to talk a little bit about entrepreneurship because this is, I think, setting up some of where, I think the SETCO board is interested in going and talking about how do we capture some of the entrepreneurial activity that's going on here. So this is, these are some numbers that I pulled from a news source. There's a, some research institutes that are really looking at entrepreneurship. And one of the things they're saying is, okay, so 8.3% of your population, they're business owners. So theoretically, 8% of our adult population has its own business. They're not all in Scarborough. So for us, is there an opportunity to sort of isolate who the business owners are who live in Scarborough but are not, don't necessarily have their business here? It's an opportunity. There's a potential, and this one, I find, this is challenging my perceptions, that there's, from this one source, they're saying there's a potential in Scarborough alone, 33 new firms a month.
All of my Scarborough people.
Yeah, I don't think much.
Yeah. So part of it is, these numbers were done by Maine entrepreneurship numbers. Again, I presented it and I'm like, it's challenging my sense. But you know what? Even if it's a tenth of that, that's a lot of entrepreneurship activity that we as SETCO should be looking at and saying, how can I help and nurture this new business formation? And what are the types of things that we can really do to focus on a startup? And one of the other stats that really, I think, got made was if a firm, a new firm survives five years, they have a 68% average growth rate over that five-year period. Yeah, I mean, they're probably microfirms and they're going from one to three people or something like that, but that's still very important. And it's homegrown and we need to figure out how we can find them, nurture them, and, you know, help them grow. And as I said, 28.6% of businesses are women-owned, according to, this is from the Economic Census. So that's a 2012 number. And this is where this 2,264, that's from the Economic Census. That's an extrapolation of the 2012 number to 2016. This is the number of businesses that they said are out there. They don't have employees. So some of those are these new businesses that are forming. Some of them are, everybody knows somebody who created a business and they're, you know... knows somebody who created a business and they're, you know, as a side gig, and they run them, and then some businesses create multiple firms.
Honey.
Yeah, yeah, exactly, exactly. But again, I think what we're seeing here is there's a rich entrepreneurial behavior that's going on in Maine and in Scarborough theoretically, and we need to figure out how to capture and work with those folks. And, you know, I think that's just a rich opportunity for us. So that's really the entrepreneurship piece. And then, I still, I brought this in, this is something we talked about from, you know, really when we were looking at the Scarborough Downs and the Crossroads folks, it's their, that terminology that they're using, which is, we're not really quite suburban, we're not quite urban, we're bringing up this, we're growing both our population and our employment, and, you know, I think that's some of the trends that we're seeing, is how do we keep all the great things about the residential part of our community, but grow our economy in ways that are compatible with the town, and compatible with the employment and skills here? And I think there's some interesting opportunities to do that. And I'm gonna stop, because now it's 6:30. And I do not want to make the finance committee mad as I go through my budget. But there's more, there's a lot more info in here. One of the things that I would point out that I thought was interesting is, we talk about traffic a lot, but when they looked at commute times, it was almost the same. Matter of fact, it increased by just a little tiny bit.
Some of the commute information was kind of counterintuitive.
The commuting data?
Yeah, the commuting data, both the volume and some of the directions.
Yeah, I agree, I agree.
I know we don't have a lot of time, but one question.
Yeah.
Having read down through all of the data, the thing that it might leave with was, so what are we supposed to do with this as part of this process? What's the next step for this piece that we need to be focusing on, or coming up with some recommendations?
Well, I'm gonna skip to the economy piece. So there's several things in here that are relevant to looking at how we go about growing our economy over the next 10 years. One is making sure we're taking advantage of the healthcare and the opportunities there, making sure that we are targeting in a market that makes sense. We get some of this data, we get some of that from here. It's reaching out on this entrepreneurship piece, and part of that is land use related. I'm gonna say that we come back to really looking at how we treat home occupations. And I think Brian Longstaff and I have been talking about, can we make it simpler, are there ways to ease the home occupation criteria, that may not be the right word, but ease the, what seems like some of the red tape, to get more of home occupations to register, number one, so that we know about them and can help them. But looking at, are we creating any excess burdens there? I don't know that we are, but I'm gonna tell you that sometimes we have questions where it's like, oh, you don't really fit neatly into the home occupation piece, you're really a separate business than your home, and so there's a lot of things that we need to look at as a companion. For affordable housing, I think what we're just saying is, the pricing continues to grow, continues to increase, and that's really for us to analyze, what does this mean for our policy with affordable housing? How can we create more opportunity in the market, or do we need to do other types of intervention?
Exactly. Without killing off the people that are 85 or 65.
I guess what I'd sort of say is, part of the comp plan is taking a snapshot of who are we? You know, and this is a lot of what's here, and are the trends that we've been seeing continuing? Okay, they are, you can't, I don't know what the future's necessarily gonna hold, but it's certainly helped inform that, so I think that's a lot of what this is about. I think in terms of sort of our land use recommendations and the other works, how this gets folded in, you know, like certainly it's gonna help inform the other components, but this is a lot of this sort of that informational basic, here's who we are as a community.
So knowing what the median price is and how is it being built right now is something that we really need to know, especially if we're concerned about, I mean, about affordable housing, geez, it's not as bad as we think it is.
Yeah, it is.
There's also that, it was referenced at one of the meetings fairly recently, the question of, you know, is the rapid growth something that should be a point of pride, and something that we should, that the town should continue, should try to encourage? Or is it something that we need to, is a potential red flag that we...
And that's the kind of discussion that we will do, you know, in terms of actually forming the plan.
Absolutely.
This is just information.
It's also interesting to think back about what we thought in the previous plan.
Yeah, isn't it?
Because both those points, we wanted to control growth, and we also wanted to increase in affordable housing. So it's interesting, did we succeed in either of those?
That's a good question, that I love that you didn't jump on right now.
Yeah, so I think there's a, you know, there's a lot of, you know, different aspects, and I guess part of what you're gonna do is think back, as you're looking at the policy, does that match what we know the community... And are we missing, are we missing a piece? And I think one of the things that probably, certainly, we feel in the department is, you know, we've used up a lot of the easily, easily developable land. So what's the next step? A lot of the land that needs to develop is gonna have some environmental constraints. And that's a good thing, because that's where it should be, but it, you know, you may not see the types of growth rates we have before, in a different mode or a different style of development. Right.
Okay, you have to know, I noticed you have a few sources in here, but you can share any of the...
Absolutely.
...juice of it all.
Sure, absolutely.
Thank you.
All right? Thank you, guys. Thank you.
Keep me watching, though.
I tried, tried my best.
So we can certainly keep, you know, parents leave it, but there's additional questions. We can keep talking about the community profile, or the other component that we have is the built environment that our consultants have put together.
This is gonna become really useful when we start actually coming up with, well, you know, if you'd like this to happen, do we have the provision that to support what it is what people want to do?
Right. What is the data telling us?
What is the data telling us what it's gonna be?
Absolutely. Are we happy with the community profile discussion?
Discussion, yeah. Profile?
Okay.
Exactly.
That's the idea. Use the best data we have. So part of, part of the work that you also were asked to look at was the built environment section that the folks at TPUDC have been, have put together for our consideration, so...
May I ask a question?
Please do, yes.
As I went through it, fascinating stuff. Our job right now is to see whether or not we agree with what they say they see. We're not gonna try to figure out how to resolve questions or...
Nope.
Identify potential changes. I mean, this is just to take a look and say, yeah, that's how I experience homeowners, and yes, that's how I experience Dunston, and not thinking to say, yeah, but...
Right, we're not answering it. I mean, we've got, there's a lot, there's a lot of pieces, so we're...
We almost fell into that last time.
Right, so we're taking, we're taking small bites of this, and so, so yeah, I mean, the questions are, are the type of reflections that are being given here, are they what the community experiences? Are we, are we sort of, where are we off base? Where are we right on track? Are there any areas that we need to flesh out further? So, I mean, this is why we, you know, we took, under cover process...
Last time we sort of did get into, decided to talk about how to resolve...
How to resolve, right, and that'll come, and...
Good.
That all will come.
Just wanna make sure that's right.
Yep.
The interesting thing, looking at printed copy, it's not the same as the copy that I was getting on my iPad, because there were sections that were really blown up, and it kind of made me wonder if there was something in there that was supposed to be specifically discussing. I don't know if anyone else...
It wasn't screen fit, you know, you needed to adjust the...
Yeah, but I get like, the font, yeah. The font went, would go, has it gotten it?
Yeah, well, you know, you're reading like a 10 or 11 font, yet all of a sudden it's 16. And then draw it back down to a smaller font again, and it was like, are you trying to highlight something?
It was just, this just makes me even more so, no more technology.
Do computers. So I think, I mean, when I was reading through here, clearly they still sort of had some little commentary that sort of said, insert illustrations here, or refer to another section there, so to me, when I was sort of reading through, that's what I was seeing in those jumps, was less about areas they were trying to highlight, but...
I like the concept on page two, I think it's the start that I can see inside, and see it, what they're calling community activity centers. Page two at the top.
I was gonna ask, you know, what are they calling it, community and regional activity centers, their definition?
Well, it comes from, yeah, previous page, identifying, you know, there's eight corners in Dunston and Oak Hill, but those are the centrally located villages, and then we have the downtown of Oak Hill, and I'm assuming that the process of Dunston and Oak Hill would be categorized as community activity centers. And I'm not saying I disagree, I think it's true, but I just think that's, that is a term that we should start to use, because it's those, that's what I have to be activity centers.
Right, yeah, I think, as you just said, that's what they were sort of reclassifying, Oak Hill, Dunston, the Downs.
Not be confused with recalling the zoning with TVC.
Right.
Right, and so the comp plan is different from the, you know, this is gonna build to our growth, our growth conservation map, you know, that's sort of what these are going to grow out of, so...
Then we get down to the next paragraph, where they're saying Scarborough Downs has the potential to be redeveloped at a higher intensity than the community activity centers, has been categorized as a regional activity center, now categorized by these folks, by our consultants, yes?
So bring me to where you are again?
I'm on page two.
Yeah, that's a good question. The way that's worded almost suggests that it's some kind of official designation.
Well, that's why I bring it up, I want to show what we do with it as a committee.
Under character and context, or...
I think it's under the plan, the whole loser process, it also recognizes Scarborough Downs, and a lot of it says, at the bottom of that paragraph, it says the potential to be redeveloped at a higher intensity than the community activity centers, has been categorized as a regional activity center. And I think that's an important thing.
It was very jumped out to me, that it looked like a definition, because it was capitalized.
Maybe it needs to be have, to be that kind of a, early service initiative, but I'm not saying I disagree. I'm just trying to figure out what we do in terms of...
So if that's the potential to come, maybe regional activity center.
But then it's been categorized as a regional activity.
I think that is, that's a good, pretty general editorial comment, maybe that there, that should probably be extra scrutiny of some of these, some of the terminology against what appears in our ordinances, to try to avoid any confusion.
Right.
I think they're just referring to density.
It sounds to me like they're just being, you know, descriptive.
When you capitalize it, regional activity center.
Yeah, I believe that's the term they used, so in the, if you remember, I think one of the first chapters we looked at was that plan format chapter, that had sort of the, had the start of the growth and conservation map, and they started to call out the hamlets, and I think that this is the terminology that they used in the growth and conservation map. But I'll affirm that, I thought I had that here, but that's also part of the problem of reading this thing disjointed, like we're doing.
You're only like, kind of looking at one part of the elephant, kind of thing, so...
Correct, so, I mean, it is gonna be a much more integrated plan, so hopefully this will, but that's a, that's a good point to bring up, we want to be sure that that's, that these things are making sense.
You've been looking at a lot of things that we haven't seen.
So you've seen that chapter, the plan format, but we have seen other chapters.
So I mean, there could be some references being made.
But I think your point is right on, because I did have, actually, just in the next sentence, they sort of talked about understanding the character of Scarborough's village, hamlets and neighborhoods. Well, we've defined hamlets, but we haven't yet defined neighborhoods, so I said, well, wait, that was my sort of comment, was, we gotta be sure where, what do we mean by the neighborhoods, are we now talking about? Because we have defined seven hamlets, so...
Yeah, I think, when you think back historically, and I have to refer to the area that I live in, the Green Acres area, it's not titled anywhere.
Right.
It was the first major development plan in 1923, I have the map book, the proposal for development.
Right, and to me, that's sort of the neighborhood, it's not defined hamlet as we sort of thought, but...
Yeah, there's not space for, you know, coordinated activity. It's gonna be, anymore because of the lateness, and so, you know, we used up, but it certainly is a neighborhood. I like the idea of this form, under character and context, going within, putting in the form, character-based coding, there's something for us to study.
Yeah, that was a question I had, because that seems to be their, to me, as I read through this, that was the silver bullet, that was the answer to all ils.
I don't know if I say all ils.
That's the way I read it, was, okay, that's one tool in the toolbox, where are the others? So that was one of the comments I had written.
That last sentence is pretty...
The most effective means.
Exactly.
In some places...
In some cases, it made you...
For a variety of sites, but not in general, not in general.
And it seemed, you know, we've sort of talked about, internally anyway, some of our zoning, at least one of them, like the TVCs, we're sort of this hybrid, we form-based zoning as it is, we already bring buildings closer and put parking behind, but that's, I don't know that those are the biggest nuts we have to crack, it's, I mean, that's certainly part of it, but we already have design standards, and maybe we need to refine those, you know, but again, it just seemed like, that's a piece to the issues, but I think, you know, some of the bigger contextual issues that I feel like we have with our built environment is the fact that these activity centers, as we just sort of talked about them, the Downs, Dunston and Oak Hill, are historic, or at least Oak Hill and Dunston are sort of rural villages, and Dunston, Downs has been identified for a growth area, well, they all sit on impaired or threatened waterfeds. So, you know, we have this balance of, we wanted direct growth to these areas, because that's where we have infrastructure that can, you know, potentially support density, but we do have these environmental conflicts, but if we run away from those areas, we could just be creating other impaired watersheds. So I was, I'm sort of hoping that these guys can help us crack that nut a little bit, more than just design, but...
Because I think we were talking character-based, as we were comparing Higginson and Park Horn, they have the same nature as far as, you know, the people that they serve, but how are their approach? It does, it does say in this character and context part, that just before the, up a couple of moments, there's a third statistic, the lock standard is yes, and I don't have purple guidelines, yes, and an example of this approach is the form-based code, it's an example of that approach. There are other examples, and I think the best, where the...
But then my next sentence seems to go, seems to really double down, kind of take it, and that's the, and they reference, there's another area back here where they reference form-based, character-based zoning as the answer, it's like, well, okay, yeah, again, there is, are there more? And not to say, again, perfectly good tool.
I think we're all okay on...
One thing that, one thing that kind of jumped out to me on this, and it's understandable in a sense, given that this is talking about the built environment, and most of the built environment is in these villages, as we refer to them, but by area, the majority of the town is more kind of suburban and rural.
Yep.
And I know, again, this might also be a function of the fact that we're kind of looking at this section in isolation, but I guess I'd like to see some, whether it's here or elsewhere, make sure that there's some recognition and consideration of the rest of the town, and thinking about these things. of the rest of the town and, and thinking about these things there as well. Because I think sometimes there's a tendency to, again, understandably to an extent, focus on the coastal areas and Route One corridor and these village nodes. And then, yeah, then there's North Scarborough, West Scarborough, the rest of the town. And that's a lot of town, maybe not population wise, although there are a lot of people who live out.
It could be where the both.
Yeah, so I, that's a big, especially if we're thinking about planning, looking at this in the longer term. I just want to make sure that we're, that that's not being short shrug.
Right, right. And actually, I think one of those, I sort of drafted was, you know, most of the residents in towns sort of identify with town with where you, where you live. Most of, you don't live in Dunston or Oak Hill. You know, it's in the Green Acres neighborhood or Pleasant Hill.
I live up Broad.
Right.
That's, that's.
Right, you're all of these people.
You experience the sectors.
What we've promoted in the last ten years is growth versus non-growth. All that, and then you say that they're all three on air, water based. That I think that's, that'll remember us really weighing the environmental consequences of pushing growth down the Route One corridor.
We didn't think.
Oh, yeah.
And that's.
That's got to be very.
I mean, and, you know, frankly, I think that's, my hope with this comp plan is that, again, we sort of talked about, we need to start to weave all these factors together. Because if we're gonna direct growth for these areas, and there might be, you know, a host of good reasons to do that, we need to at least recognize the challenges and protect. How do we, what are, what are the methodologies? What are the tools to deal with those?
For the access to resources automatically, which we're talking about now, because it talks about making connections with nature, incorporating photography, water, testing the design of the built environment. But it doesn't, it doesn't address what you just, what you just discussed has to be more right in your face if you look in the front than what it says here at the very end of that paragraph, that the town should work to preserve these important connections to nature while finding new ways to connect people, et cetera, et cetera. But nowhere there was to say anything about the natural resources having an impact, having, that growth in our growth areas has an impact on natural resources. I mean, that is not.
Yep, and I also think it's important to highlight the importance of, to highlight the value of the, of the watersheds and the natural environment in its own right, not purely as a resource for people to enjoy, although.
Not to recreate.
That's a big part of it, and it's understandable, and it makes sense to, to kind of make sure that there's a constituency for it. But I'd hate to see it considered only to the extent that people can go kayaking or, or have a view. I mean, the view thing in Scarborough, as we know, can come up on issue. And I just, yeah, I think it's important to think about the, the streams themselves, the environment itself.
Before we move on from natural resources, I would like to put in a plug for scenic views. I mean, with the previous comp plan, we've done a lot of time. We would put on a bus. And then when you, you put people with us, we'd go on the bus and we'd look at the view corridors.
Yep.
It was a big deal for us. And as far as the city, it didn't make it into five hundred. So I would like to make a big deal about that, that we do, we do identify what those, what those scenic views were. And I think that we would have a, a pass right now if we was happy. If we had a listing of what the view corridors are. It's not a good question.
Well, I guess, so that's, that's a question. Would this comp plan actually identify those view corridors? Because then I think that's a diff, we need to then start an earnest effort of doing, are you thinking pulling out what you, what was done back ten, twelve years ago? Or would this comp plan reference the fact that we should identify our scenic? I, I don't think this plan is gonna be where we identify the scenic corridors. I think if we can reference that the town should take on the effort and undergo a study to identify the scenic corridors.
I would go with the first option. Make a recommendation that we go through the previous material to see what they were. In other words, listening to them, there are gonna be some that are gonna be useless because we didn't do anything about it and they're all, they're gone.
Well, yeah, I guess to me, that does lead to that question. You know, once you've identified them, what can you do about it? Because they're, at a legal level, you, there can debate whether people are entitled to have views. And I think we all would agree that these view corridors exist and they're valuable. But from a pragmatic planning perspective, once they're identified, are we going to, is the town going to, are there gonna be moratoriums? Are there gonna be height limits?
I think that's the kind of thing we have to take a look at. And the fact that it's actually in the comp plan that these are the scenic areas that we identified is a big deal.
Well, so I guess that's my question is, if we want to take the time to identify the scenic corridors, then I think that's a multi-month sort of public outreach process? Or, or is it just the six or eight of us around?
The comp plan should include direction to create a list.
That's what he said.
That's what I would say. I guess what I wanted to.
Change on lists would be taken from the archives and then checked. We don't have to be in the entire.
Right, as part of the process.
Because usually, I mean, some of them were probably affected by what was going on at the time that they were identified. One in particular was Hyatt's Parkway. I wholeheartedly disagree that it was a visual vista, you know, like, so, oh, let's go to Hyatt's Parkway. But there was a lot going on about Hyatt's Parkway at that time, so.
I think it's.
Okay.
Yeah.
Take a look at what they, what they did. Oh, and this whole thing on the story, we're supposed to still avoid. It's something that's been in the plan that really empowers the support preservation implementation committee. These are, these, these people are fond of knowledge, but they don't feel empowered. What do you mean, I'm not hanging out there for the past couple of months? And working on a particular project that makes them a resource for me? I'm blown away by what the historic society has. But those people are the ones that really feed into the preservation implementation committee, or certainly could. And I don't think it works that way. So somehow or another, it's an empowerment that needs to happen. And I don't know how you, how you do that in terms of bringing the comp plan. So all kinds of things that are on the national ratio of historical places.
Absolutely, yep. Yep, then we have our local list of forty-eight, I think it is, is in our ordinance. Yep. So, so you're talking about a reference to tying the historic society in with the, because here it references the historic, the preservation implementation committee, which is a town committee, but the historic society is their separate body.
Historic society needs to be.
Part of the town, obviously.
Taking it everywhere, I think.
I think I circled that one, did you say that? I think I got Dunston wrong, yep.
Dunston. I have a big how under the under importance of building environment. And I won't go into it because I noticed a simple way to do it. But the second, a bucking, a bucking town structure that provide all residents with our situation, so on. But this is a poor housing. Built environment and urban streets and spaces should also be facilitated and able to adapt to changing demographics. That's a big topic to take on.
Sounds like any town, anywhere. It also sounds.
I know.
Or a grab of the, grasp of the obvious here.
That's why I love it.
Someone with a comp plan sometimes does. It's a bit of motherhood apple pie.
A few platitudes and notions statement.
That's one of the things I would like to see not happen. I would like, I would like this to not be apple pie. Because I think it's incredibly important.
Yep.
We need to make it a little, can't get two more teeth in it.
Right.
So I'd like that, more teeth.
More teeth, right. Yes, yes. And so some of the teeth start to come, a little bit anyway, when we get to the community and neighborhood design, when they get into the, I think, six or seven principles.
Yeah, that's.
That's where they start, we start to talk a little bit about how we're gonna achieve some of these things. Folks have much in the way in comments? I mean, one of the things I, I noted sort of under walkability and maybe core the circles a little bit back to what you were talking about. I remember during, at least maybe some of our, maybe it was neighborhood meetings, maybe it was playing blues, I can't remember when, but oftentimes people talking about having connections between the neighborhoods, again, you know, not necessarily our hamlets or our villages, you know, but. I'm on page four, under community neighborhood and design.
Walkability.
Walkability. You know, I think a lot of this is focused around walkability in sort of those activity centers, but connecting, you know, one sort of rural suburban subdivision with another one. We have sort of these open spaces that have been created, but now it's about making those connections and maybe.
I'd say the most important, well, that's not, I should say, a very important part of this walkability is that it lasts few lines under destination where it says most of the town residents don't live within.
Yep.
So here should be taken when developing or redeveloping the abilities to provide a healthy humanities. So as many residents as possible, that's a, that's a pregame to make sure it's pretty, much as long as.
And the biking, yeah.
Biking the same thing, yeah.
But wouldn't we need to, at that point, isn't that an ordinance change? It's gonna be required as I'm, you know, sitting on the planning board, people sitting on the planning board. How are they gonna be able to enforce that this new development needs to be able to connect to the other development? And part of the problem you run into there is that the other development didn't make, the provisions for the connectivity, so now what the hell do you do?
Right.
You can't go back and ask the residents in the other development to now put in.
Try to.
You know, I mean, it's, so you can't.
Give you another example, with Green Acres again, but there was a bridge put in, just as you come into Green Acres Road. And it was supposed to connect to a pathway that went to the rear of that parcel and down along the river and connected up with another walk. And it's never happened, we have a bridge to nowhere.
Yeah.
Nobody has ever maintained it or established it, you know, so that it works.
That's where, yeah, you do get into some of the tension between what people, what people, being used very broadly, what people often say they want in a community and then what they vote for when they put their, their wallets in a checkbook, when they go to buy a house, they go to buy a house at the end of the cul-de-sac, and they don't want people cutting through.
Yep.
And so I think, you know, these are, I'm sure there are gonna be some more interesting conversations about this.
Oh, yeah.
You know, with the crossroads right now, we're talking about connectivity there and the Sawyer Road question. And, you know, that's another example.
It's just, when we get to this part, not tonight, when we get to this part, we've got a lot, plenty of time for it because it really does have to be, I mean, a big deal. So far in our history, it hasn't.
In terms of connectivity between.
Connectivity.
Yep.
Yeah, probably, I mentioned before too, and as you know, Susan, if you're on the planning board, when we're, when we're talking about side, even sidewalks, not even connectivity, but just having sidewalks in neighborhoods. And the attitude generally seems to be, the default attitude is, oh, it's not like, where are they gonna walk to? It's a part of the social neighborhood and it's more expensive. So what should we have to do?
Because there are areas where it worked though. I mean, there are successes in time, you might think of any, but I know, you know, you see the end of the sidewalk, but somewhere down the line, you're gonna be there. I mean, I live in a good example up at Gino Colm and Cumblyland, which was developed in two or three phases. And there was a fire, a fire path that is now a connection to probably three or four gradually larger loops between Maple and Honeywell Hill and the new neighborhood, which works fabulously for people walking.
There's lots of people.
If that, you know, if that was, if it was simply, simple as a easement, let a leftover fire even.
I think it's definitely possible, and the time has come because you're along the, they, they chew on this.
And there is value, again, based on the planning board experience, there is value in having these principles in the comp plan, just at that level, because applicants, developers and other applicants will read it and they will say, you know, this is, this is consistent with the comp plan, or, you know, and it gives us, gives us something to, it gives us something to kind of hang our hats on.
But you can talk about it, but just, again, going back to, you need to have a teeth, right? And the only way you have a teeth is you gotta put it in.
Right, right.
And you gotta put teeth.
Otherwise, it's basically negotiated.
Exactly. But if it's not in the comp plan, then we can't get it into an ordinance. So this is sort of our first.
I guess what I'm asking is, what's a teeth in the comp plan? Definition of what we want to do? Not just, you know, just touch and break those teeth and get this important fact, it is expected that, that kind of language.
Is there a reason why they didn't include bikeability, Jay?
I don't even want.
Um, no sort of.
Walkability is sort of more important here, I remember?
Yeah, I don't, I don't know why. Yeah, I think maybe we could even consider this walkability more of a, um, alternative mode.
Intention.
Right, multimodal or alternative mode.
They talked about the whole quarter mile, which they say people have to walk more than a quarter mile. But bikeability takes.
It's a little bit bigger.
Yeah. In the, in the transportation chapter, they talked a bit about bikeability, ability for bikes. So. I guess that's a question we wanna have as one of the principles for.
Okay, so are we under mixed use now?
Wherever you want to go.
Well, I don't know. Are we done with the next one?
Sure.
You have mixed use?
Yeah, and I think sort of the connectivity bit does start that also touches on what we were.
This seems to be, section three, seems to be sort of taking what we're already doing and patting on the back and saying, wow.
The mixed use piece?
And then the principle four, development intensity. At the very bottom is one of the things that I keep coming back to when I remember reading this for the first time. It's like, this is, this is something that we don't say, have not said to date very much, which is, several of the village nodes present opportunities is several of the village nodes present opportunities for added development intensity so that the natural environment and open spaces can be better preserved in the less dense areas of the community. We haven't really done anything with that yet, but it's going to happen. We're just going to have to go off there and start building.
Well, I think though, I think that was the whole purpose of the TBC. When we identified areas of TBC, we identified them as the mixed use, the higher density places, this is where we want to add more development. I mean, I, to me, I feel like we've already kind of taken that on.
The growth versus non-growth.
Yeah, and addressed it, and we said, these, this is the growth areas, and the remote areas are where we don't want this to occur, so we discouraged it through ordinances and, you know, minimum lot sizes and things of that nature, you know, that just are dense. So I feel that's very much of what we're currently doing. I don't see a lot of change.
Right, and again, I don't think we sort of talked about with this comp plan, it's not as though, you know, when we started this whole process, it was, we're building off the old comp plan. We know where, you know, we've identified the areas that we want to grow, and where the purpose is now it's, okay, if those are the areas we want to grow, and we know there's issues with traffic, and we know there's issues with housing affordability, and we know there's other, these other issues, how do we weave it all in? So again, I think a lot of this is sort of echoing, and now it's, and so I think to your point, Susan, I think this is kind of along the lines of what I was talking about before, where, you know, they're talking about by avoiding areas where environmental or other constraints are present, development areas will be more resilient. Well, we've already talked about, you know, the development areas, the areas we've identified from the highest density or the, you know, highest intensity, maybe is a better word, if development are naturally constrained areas as it is. So how do we balance those two elements?
And we're finding from there.
Right, yeah.
So I think there's just.
It has to be said about. I like that word. The next part, just principle five, is it okay if I go there?
Sure.
I love the word scale. When we did the first comp plan, we worked with Terry Delon a lot, and Terry, that was one of his favorite words, scale. He starts thinking about housing and the sense of the community, it's all about scale, which is one of the reasons why some of the buildings that we put into Oakdale haven't worked, is because the scale wasn't right. So I just did that again, this is restating what we already know, there's nothing new But I'd like the last part, the most important aspect of creating buildings that are scaled appropriately is the design of the first floor and how it relates to sidewalk and pedestrian areas adjacent to it. That's not the only part of scale that's important.
First step, yeah. The next step up would be vehicular or longer range.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, can you say that again?
Well, I was just thinking, the next step up in the scale would be from a more from a distance from vehicular or from a, the next level up in scale portion of pedestrian
I think what I'm asking for is that the word scale be really big in this whole definition of design, because it really does require a side-by-side decision. How does this look from the bicycles, from the pedestrian, from the car? How does it look from the people that live out that work the way behind it? It's not like getting sidewalks, it's not just to see what the natural layout of the present property is, although we want to continue to do that, but also what's the scale of this homework? That's what we did down at Higgins. We were down, we looked at it. Yes, and we're not doing as much when it comes to developments for new buildings, and we don't use that word, and things that are important and much.
I think a lot of our ordinances do talk about human scale, but we don't really know what human scale, what does it mean? What does that mean? You know, lay more members of, yeah.
We always come back to Route One for good reason, and that's one of the biggest challenges in that area.
How do you put something in there?
So that, because you're, most people experience it from a, from a vehicle, and most people just want to get through, and so there's, that's another tension is between that, that very utilitarian purpose of the road versus things like walkability and scale.
I think what I'm asking for here is somehow or another to present this in such a way that we don't ignore it anymore, because plenty more doesn't pay attention occasionally, not much. It's not, it's not a big ticket.
Subjective.
Right, it's hard to.
That doesn't mean we shouldn't do it. How do you pull it on? You can get some, these people can.
Hopefully, hopefully, it works to do some of it.
We are some of that. Not a big.
I think data is constantly very, right, I mean, it's incredibly subjective. What you do try to do is, you know.
You don't have any data to quantify that, yeah. But it's what makes a successful community and not a successful community.
Promote variety scales or promote somehow.
Because I think that, you know, the current building, the public safety building, they haven't used the word scale, but they've been very, very attentive to how that fits scale-wise into other buildings that, you know, to Bessie, to Town Hall.
This may be a place in the comp plan that we need sketches.
Yeah, I know there's, I think they've talked quite a bit about inserting sketches, so hopefully, yeah, that's a good way. It's part of this.
Do you like the scale or the scale?
Right, that's part of definitely, I think, the, when the selection of the team was really about their, their sort of ability to usually put together a plan, so that's definitely a critical component that's missing in terms of the sort of way we're looking at it right now is the end product.
I think the building, I think a good example of the scale, particularly the rear of building and the facade that was chosen to, you know, so that it moved all the way down and further. I'm very cautious there. And then that last paragraph on page seven is still part of this number five, we're talking about design decision, and we have design decisions.
Yes.
They're not always used, especially by person, but like to see them, but they're there. Too much land, too much space that is not.
Yeah, I think parking location, again, is something that's echoed in a lot of our ordinances already, and our design standards are minimizing the amount of parking out front.
Yeah, I think the one thing that this adds is it actually says, put something in there about smart technologies, right? So that's something our current, we don't really address that, I don't think, right now in parking, where as we look to the future, we might need to do more of that.
I think using parking as shared spaces and based on the hours that particular business might be open, you see, some of it happening very nicely, but the parking that's available after April, May, and keeping that conscious.
I would say this, generally speaking, it's a bit of a success story on the planning board process, and I think, you know, we've been flexible at times, but that's, it's very clear that that's a guiding principle, and you start there, and you might enango a little bit, but it's good to have it reinforced if you can always see the future.
We did that when we had the workshop down in Dunston, and we had two groups, and we had maps, and we tried to move it from the corridor itself to pathways behind businesses and things, and so it's been there, but I don't think we've had to change it.
I agree with what they're saying under sustainability, being able to limit to other sections, question mark. This is a big, and we don't need to discuss it originally, but I just like the fact that they put this high level of sustainability as being a bigger deal when incorporated to date.
Yes, sort of looking forward to seeing what they put together of this one.
Yeah, that's a good one, but so, yeah.
And there's that history nature of preserves seen views again. I just love, I shouldn't skip ahead that far.
Yeah, this is where they start to echo that the most effective ways to ensure quality built environments through the floor-based character code, you know. That's great, that's one, what else? And again, I agree, you know, that that makes sense, but.
I love public art. If you have a dog on the beach every four years over the beach, try talking about, you know, public art.
Well, if you, what about dogs on the beach?
Something else for.
I remember dogs on the beach, but I don't remember what the art.
That was brought up more people to me.
And what she's saying is if you want to bring out the same number of people.
Number of people to talk about public art, I got you, right.
I'm not saying that's bad either, she's like, do it. Because I, because I, she's saying, I.
So this is, and again, not to jump ahead, but it's sort of under the town's role in the built environment, it's here they start to talk about impacts of growth in the environment. They really feel like they didn't sort of hit the, this is where I feel like they could drill into the issue we've been talking about. It's sort of very, you know.
This is a way forty thousand.
Right, this is more of a national discussion level paragraph than it is a local, and, you know, that, we're part of the national discussion again, but.
Let's go down.
Right, well, they have a sort of idea going there.
Right, yeah.
Things that was.
Right, talking about our stormwater permits and sort of the regulations that are coming down in that regard, so, yeah, felt like this was a little bit, so, I don't know, others felt the same, but that.
So that would have asked a question under the town's role in the built environment, green, the green introduction part. The last couple of sentences say, many municipalities create partnerships with development community, blah de blah. I have no idea what they're talking about, so if it's going to be something that we're going to consider, it's going to be a little more in detail than we can. But it does reference type of scale and a scale, as well as in the second sentence. We may have to have a whole.
Yeah, almost good.
Reading on scale.
Is it literally talking about creating partnerships, or is it more along the lines of what's going on right now with the down, it's a collaborative, multi-plan, master planning process.
But the basic tenants of the zoning are in place, now it's.
Questions from, what do we mean by this?
On page nine, impacts of all oriented communities. I don't know what to do with this except just make it aside. Very car-dependent community, really, it's important to continue to mitigate the impacts, really. Quite unique codes, ordinances, and plan development in order to minimize negative impacts. This is huge, I mean, this is what we are. We are a car-dependent community, and I think there's going to be a bunch of real strong discussion about how we want it. This isn't enough.
They could develop it in the right way, I mean, to reduce the vehicular by creating jobs, creating jobs closer to houses.
Yeah, they have transit.
They're, they're.
Well, yeah, I think that's part of where they're going. The whole, the community snapshot piece relates to it too, is that to the extent that people think of Scarborough as a bedroom community, people drive from or through, that has implications for these things, and so it's, it makes sense to step back and revisit that.
I think so, because it looks like a grocery list, you know, it's more too important than that. Nothing else, maybe bigger, give a little more detail.
Transportation committee is talking about the mass transit and the parking ride and developing that.
Right, I mean, less noise, less, but there's no suggestions in here.
Right, and so I think we'll have to, as this continues through, when, you know, see how it ties to the transportation section and the, hopefully the recommendations that.
The consultants.
A reference here, brush this out in terms of.
It's like Cendrins are working on it.
Yeah. I think that section, transportation is pretty much finished, I'm moving into what's going to be.
I think we've sold the gas backwards, so.
Oh, good lord. Favorite, my favorite. I can remember today.
This is much, so this is.
Harder, harder, harder.
What do we do about, what do we phrase that? Is it possible to build into a comp plan? Something about a degree of commitment of the town to affordable housing? Oh, we've got things that can be done now, and we're not doing it. We are collecting money, and we don't want to be part of it. What we're not doing much to encourage, that is to actually build in such a way that their developments include potential for affordable housing. We'll give you money, you put it there. You don't want to be part of the community, part of our development. I mean, I'm being strong in my voice about that, and I'm not sure it's fair, but it's such a big deal. It's not.
So what, do you have any sort of specifics or?
You know, it's a topic that's, I was just saying that we discussed that in the old panel, I mean, it's been, it's been a hot issue, and it always gets smothered, you know, because we can't define what's affordable or.
Yes, that.
There's, right, and there, you know, there's kind of a whole subsidy side of that, and then there's the, what some people might refer to as kind of naturally occurring affordable housing, which can be incentivized through different dimensional and density regulations at times, and I'm trying to remember what, as an example, this was a few months ago, someone came to the planning board of, you know, that it was, in some ways, it was affordable housing, it really was basically just kind of apartments, but, you know, no frill.
I think it goes down Dunston Village, Harold Vernon.
Right, right, and the way he articulated it at the time was, we really, and I take that as word, you know, he really wanted, saw this as an unmet need in the town. Obviously, he has an interest, he wants to make some money out of it too, understandably, but he saw it as an unmet need in the community, and this was a way of providing that without any outside subsidy or any, anything sort of.
Somebody said, you know, pick this brain about all that subsidy. You need a lot of that.
Well, so, so he doesn't, he doesn't do subsidies, that's his, that was, that was sort of his, his slant on him was, he sort of found that sweet spot, you know, where he's not down at the subsidies level, but he's able to provide housing for those who are making thirteen to fourteen dollars an hour, and, you know, he's got his pro forma right down, and he, you know.
He's size of the unit.
So that's what I'm, that's what I'm getting, is bringing it back to the broader conversation is that some of that is a function of size, density, and the things that, you know, people might disagree on, but I think that has to be part of the conversation.
That's what the market is good and will bear.
From my view of it, yeah, yeah.
That's the niche.
Is it one decade and two million, what is it, twelve hundred and fourteen hundred?
And some of that gets, I'm sorry, go ahead.
And I think, as with a lot of this stuff, some of that can become an uncut conversation because people talk about how we need to have affordable housing, we need to be able to have our teachers and firefighters who work live in town, but then if they see a certain type of development going in, it's more dense than they think is appropriate or is not. Just the other night, again, people talking about this is not consistent with the character of Scarborough, this is not what Scarborough is about, not even in the project, but that's the kind of thing that I think has to be addressed.
Yeah, it does, and I don't know how to put that into language in the comp plan. I mean, obviously, as a town, we have to deal with this, and when we actually write the comp plan, we have to keep in mind all of this, but this one, they provide here is a little more, again, like, it's just too small, it doesn't indicate, it's not.
Yeah, it's hard to find the right level of.
It's a more punch, I mean, it needs to be punched up.
There is an opportunity with the downs, they mentioned the ten percent requirement for affordable housing, that's a strategy, I think.
Yeah, but we've kind of played with that in the past, I mean, I can remember Kerry Anderson coming to us, the Chamber of Brothers coming to us, saying they're dying on the vine, trying to get affordable housing units into their developments, and they were giving some, you know, there were density bonuses and stuff, and they just physically couldn't get people into, you know, into their developments to make it happen. It was a matter of, some of the formulas and, you know.
This guy is doing this so important.
Yeah, I, it's, I remember having, I believe it was a conversation where Tom Hall got involved with Affordable Housing Alliance, and we went through a bunch of stuff on what, what can we do, how do we do it to make this work? And, you know, everybody just kind of keeps coming back saying, it doesn't look good.
One of the things, just so folks know, if you don't already know, with the, with the, what was it being called, the Gateway Commons, at Higgins Parkway, as part of that contract zone, they were on the up for seven hundred thousand or some large amount of money towards affordable housing, and the alliance has put out an RFP to say, because I think to date we have about two hundred fifty, it's, they're padding sort of as the buildings come online, we don't have all the money, but there's an RFP out on the We don't have all the money, but there's an RFP out on the street for, that said in town, saying, folks, we have, we have funding to help with an affordable housing project. And then there's a process to review that. Ultimately, the council has to sort of allow those ways to be spent.
Maybe that's what I'm looking for in here, is that the town needs to, more publicly, shake the stand, says towns are going to be involved in creating this kind of thing. And that's, that's, that's possibly what I'm looking for. And maybe a specific strategy, if there's any communities out there that have come up with something that, you know, is a workable strategy.
Well, and I guess that's also part of the, what I, we need to be mindful of with the comprehensive plan, you know, we've already sort of talked about. How do we, you know, figure out the environmental issues within our growth areas, the affordable housing? The comp plan's not going to answer every question. It needs to highlight that these are the areas we need to work on next. And it sort of set the stage. So I think we just need to be sure, you know, again, we can take these as far as we want. But if we're going to sort of figure out the answer in the comp plan, we're going to never get a comp plan. We'll just be.
I had this thing I do, I like what you just said, and I'm not sure if I can repeat it.
Not sure I could.
This is what it is we need to really do now in Scarborough. It's like a priority setting thing.
Well, that's what the plan is for. These are the areas we need to address next. You know, we, we got this far based on where we were in the last component. And kind of rebounding off that, we need to address affordable housing.
We need to take it further. We haven't gone, sort of the statement of, we have, here are the things, as you just said, here are the things we've done.
Right.
We haven't gone, we still haven't addressed it, here, look at the data, we haven't addressed it, we need to go further.
Rather than, until we get to, I mean, we'll do again, we'll do more detail when we get to this kind of thing. That's what I'm looking for, for a commitment statement of some sort.
And then I just see pick.
Even though the implementation.
Works on that.
I do love the fact that it does talk, it does reference.
We did thousands of times.
And I was only implementing patient committee and it was uneasy, you know, a stance or whatever. But we need to know what they were doing. I think the type of making of the table will be something. I'm a little confused about accessory dwelling units in page twelve. Town should use four ways to create a diversity, allowing residents to stay in the same area. Accessory dwelling units are a category that provides smaller, more affordable housing conditions within single family or mixed use neighborhoods. I'm not sure how to put this in a comp plan. But we allow the eighteen to limit the number of occupants to two and then give it a seven hundred and fifty square feet. I mean, is this the place where that belongs?
Maybe it doesn't need to be that restrictive. I think what they're, I think what they're just saying, I think they're just identifying what we already allow. So again, back to what we were talking about, what, what the town's already doing here. I think they're, they're, they're starting to highlight some of the things the town does that leans towards affordable housing. And I think they're then saying we could step up beyond what we're already doing.
Like four occupants or something.
Right. Or not worry about the number of occupants or what have you. So, well, if it comes in.
The last sentence, this last sentence makes sense. Town should finish to present restrictions on the number of occupants that correspond to the square footage.
Right, yeah.
I love that song.
It's such a quick place to do that.
Yeah, I think that's what these sort of last six or seven bullet points that are affordable, housing affordability are aimed at doing. Sort of what we were.
Keeps it active in the list of.
Well, some of that comes from the extent that we created it work on, we couldn't. So we've given people the easy way out of that money.
You just pay for it.
Yeah. I mean, that could be increased, right? Could be. You know? Not trying to make it restrictive, but you're trying to also say, hey, look, it's got to be more than just lip service. We have, we've got to really do something.
Yeah, that's exactly what I'm looking for. My partner wrote it, he says, and then you turn it over to the implementation committee. The implementation committee is going to want to know how far it can go. And if this article, if this document says, go for it, then the implementation committee.
When this committee or the council says it, I think, probably.
Yeah.
And as we all know, it always becomes a balance, right? You know, you can have all the ideas around this table, but then there's a whole community discussion that occurs. And there's a host of, host of thoughts on every issue and trying to find the compromise.
Is this posted on the website?
Uh, so it went on, it was attached as part of our agenda. And so it'll get put up online and want us to have committees sort of.
Will they come back to us with our suggestions for?
So what, what they're going to do is sort of take what we're doing. And so I think the next time we're going to see all this is as a full package.
The previous one that we did and this one?
Yeah, right.
Sort of more that are coming, right?
Right, yeah. So actually, I just received late this afternoon an email from Sandy Green that had two more chapters. So I'll be sending those around here shortly. So there's, so, yeah, I don't think we're going to get, you're not, we're not going to get this chapter back just like this. I think, but we'll, we'll see it integrated, we'll see it with the pictures.
So I'm concerned about something that we discussed actually making it into the final draft.
So we're taking minutes that are going to capture sort of our concerns. And so we'll be able to sort of go back and, so either hold, hold on to your draft, which is not a bad idea to do with your notes. But we can also, once we do get the full draft, we can go back into our minutes and say, okay, we talked, you know, as a reminder of what we talked about. But I am, essentially what I, what I'm doing with each of these is I'm sending back to Sandy Green sort of a list of comments. Some of them are, you know, just typo stuff, but a lot of it is sort of the, A, you know, sort of policy level stuff that we're talking about here. So that's why I was trying to bring up some of the thoughts I had to be sure I'm capturing it right after we're sending these thoughts along. And then adding what you folks have to say as well, so.
Overall, I think they're doing a good job. I don't have any huge, you know, things to say about what we're doing. It's just, the areas will be just kind of.
It's the big ideas. It's the more big ideas. Yeah. So, so one of the comments Jay made, I mean, I think, and Karen maybe as well, is there, I think there's going to be a certain amount of recitation in there. Because you do have to, you have to meet the statutory requirements of the comp plan. So you've got to, you've got to check all those boxes. And there are also going to be things that are sort of repeating or reinforcing what was in the old plan, which is appropriate too. But I agree that there are areas where it can be flushed out.
I think the idea of this is what we did. The previous plan said, this is what we did, and this is what we need to do. Thank God. This is written in such a ways that, you know, that you can pull the ideas out, that you can put on the timeline. So that, you know, again, we address them full-fledged again. And talk about the.
Anything else? Public comment?
Any public comment?
Public question? What's the timeline for this in terms of turning around the more or less full draft and making it available to the public? And how's that going to happen?
So let's see, hopefully we'll see the full draft in the next, I'm not, I guess I'm, I'm not entirely certain when we'll see the full draft, but in the next month or two. And then we'll have to talk about as a committee sort of how, what the process is once we have that from the, from the consultant. I think we have talked about in the past, you know, doing sort of a roadshow with it, I would envision. But again, I think as a committee, we'll, we'll want to talk about how we roll it out, how we be sure, how to ensure that we get enough public comment, feedbacks, and that the community has. That's the other thing, this is a hefty document, it's a big document, the community's going to need time to soak with it, think about it, read it, and have time to sort of deliberate. So I don't think it's going to be a quick, hey, we got the draft, council, here you go, where it's all good. I think there's going to be quite a bit of discussion, but again, we'll have to talk about that with the committee. So hopefully that helps answer some of your questions.
It will go a little.
Oh, we want it adopted by fall, I mean, late fall or? Isn't that our goal?
It's a lot of our goal. Right, we can make that happen, yeah.
I'm sensitive to this anymore now.
But it's a matter of.
It's very large.
Well, what is our requirement as far as the state's concerned?
You know, there's, I'm not really too concerned with the state requirements. They're not going to fine us, we're not under any violation, we're working on it. So it's not as though, I guess there's very, that's, that's the least of my concerns, I'll put it that way. Our state, you know, at this point, the state review, and I think we've talked about this before. The state review, ten, twelve years ago when we adopted this, they had, we had a state planning office that had a dozen people in it. Everyone looked at it, it got sent to every agency. We got, in this, not just Scarborough, but every town, there were tons of comments. At this point, there's one guy who basically says, have you guys checked the box? Yep, okay, this plan looks good. It's, it's a much different state-level process. So I'm, I'm very much less concerned about the state level than I am.
What we actually get.
What we have, what the community.
So we're not, yeah, we're not operating under any arbitrary.
We're under no gun. And, and the state knows we're working on this, you know, Phil, up at the state knows that we're, we're doing this process. And so we're, we're definitely keeping them in the loop. So, yeah, I don't think we're under any type of hammer at all.
Okay.
So a public comment, right? All right, very good.
Our next meeting is in March, I can ask.
That's right, we've established sort of doing comp plan meetings, was this the fourth Thursday?
Fourth Thursday.
Yeah. And then our, our standing long-range planning is the, is the first Friday of the month. So next Friday. So.
We're back here?
Yes.
Uh, next Friday, yep.
We're back here.
Next Friday morning is here.
Yep.
And all meetings in the evening are here in this.
Okay, thank you.
Except for the planning board.
All long-range planning.
Yeah, that's true.
Fourth Thursday of the month.
Our comp plan meeting, Thursday night meetings are all here.
Yeah.
And so we'll, we'll talk about what an agenda might look like for next Friday.